Good evening, everybody. It is April 15th, 2019. Here at the City of On Sound, our council meeting. We did not have a closed session tonight, so we're starting tonight at 7:00 PM. I note that Councillor Thomas is not with us tonight. He's away on a business matter. And Councillor Hamley is not present at the moment, but I understand he'll be along sometime soon. Additional business? Staff? None? Council? Go ahead, Councillor Dodd.
Thank you, your worship. I have one about the Festival of Northern Lights trivia night.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll have a couple of matters to speak to. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none at the moment, I understand we may have one later. Confirmation of the council minutes from April 1st.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Kapke, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on April the 1st, 2019, as printed, be adopted.
All in favor? That is carried. Now, we're at number seven on the agenda, which is the motion to move council into committee of the whole. Go ahead.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Kapke. Bless you. That city council now move into committee of the whole to consider public meetings, deputations, and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff, consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business.
Great. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So, in the committee of the whole, we're at number eight in our agenda. We have no public meetings. Deputations, we have two. The first one is Mr. Abrams and Ms. Atwood Petkovsky, co-principals of Principles Integrity, with regard to their complaint investigation report. So, welcome.
Thank you very much, your worship. I'm Janice. My partner Jeff is seated behind. And I'm going to take the opportunity, first of all, to just say thank you for having us here this evening. We do make it our practice to attend council when we have a report in front of council. So, we, I think we met most, if not all of you, at the Gray County Training and Orientation. Get back a couple of months, so good to see you all again. We have, as our mantra at Principles Integrity, we look at the perception that a community's elected representatives are operating with integrity is the glue which sustains local democracy. We live in a time when citizens are skeptical of their elected officials at all levels. So, the overarching objective in appointing an integrity commissioner is to ensure the existence of robust, robust and effective policies, procedures, and mechanisms to enhance the citizen's perception that their council and local boards meet established ethical standards. And where they do not, that there exists a review mechanism that serves the public We, we think the focus should always be on education and advice, and that when necessary, and only when necessary, we will investigate complaints. We had, in the instance of the matter before you this evening, we had a complaint which really consisted of three allegations, primarily around conflict of interest. So, the allegation that then-councillor O'Leary, now Deputy Mayor O'Leary, had a, effectively, a conflict of interest as a prospective shareholder of Muddtown Station in dealing with the lease matter when it came forward in April of 2017, and that he had a conflict of interest because there is, Muddtown Station appears in promotional materials that are supported by the town, and that as a shareholder of Muddtown Station, when he moved a motion in September of 2018 regarding the rerouting, the reverse, optional reverse lane costing on 10th Street Bridge, that that was a conflict of interest in causing rerouted traffic to pass by Muddtown Station. So, what we do when we receive a complaint is that we first review the matter. That's sort of what we would call a triage, to determine whether there is something there that needs to be looked at. And we're really looking at, when we review a matter, to see if on its face, if true, if the matters could potentially raise a legitimate concern that warrants investigation. Not every allegation of a minor matter warrants an investigation in the public interest. But in this matter, we thought that on its face, it raised some, some apparently legitimate concerns that warranted at least a second look and an investigation. When we commence an investigation, we are always adhering to and applying the principles of procedural fairness. That is, primarily, we want to make sure we understand the essence of the complaint, and then understand very clearly what the respondent council member has to say in response to that. We try to be completely procedurally fair in that process. And we, in the con, in the process of reviewing that, we will determine which, which relevant witnesses we need to interview, and what evidence we need to look at. So, we did that. You'll see at paragraph 33, we have provided just a sort of a timeline chart to help really the reader of this, because one of the purposes of these reports is to report back to council as to our findings, but also to clarify for the public why we arrived at those findings. We want the report to be accessible to the public, so the public can understand how we arrived at findings. And the timeline sets out the actual timing of events. So, you'll see in April of 2017, council dealt with the Muddtown lease, or the lease of the Muddtown Station property. In September of 2017, there was an open house event at Muddtown Station, really promoting interest in the vision. In August of 2018, the councillor acquired a shareholding interest. And in September of 2018, the motion with respect to the 10th Street Bridge repair was moved. Those are really the key time milestones along the timeline. You'll see from our findings that we found that there is no conflict with respect to the councillor having an interest at the time that the lease matter was dealt with. That was a full 16 months before the shares were acquired. We also find that the councillor did not have a conflict of interest by virtue of Muddtown Station being included in various promotional materials. Those matters are not matters that are coming before council, and as we pointed in the report, if they were to come before council, then the councillor would then have to declare a conflict and step away. Again, those matters have not been before council for approval, so there's no basis on which to find a conflict of interest. Finally, with respect to the fifth lane option costing, that was the essence of the motion that the council had moved, we found that the issue of reversal of traffic considered in that motion, or that was to be costed in that motion, would have no particular impact, benefit or otherwise, to Muddtown Station because of the configuration and the rerouting of traffic, and therefore, there was no basis for finding that there was conflict on that matter. We think that the report speaks for itself, so I won't be dragging you through tooth and nail every paragraph of it. We think that the primary takeaways from this matter are really that, of course, these matters are always driven by the facts in the case, so it's hard to generalize when there will or will not be a conflict of interest. But it's always a cautionary note to members that where they may have an interest, where they think they may have an interest, we really encourage members to reach out and ask. Sometimes, an hour or two of advice can save, you know, quite a few hours of investigation. It probably wouldn't have been the case in this particular case, because the matter was all a little bit retrospective. But certainly, there's always opportunities for council members to reach out if there is the opportunity for advice, and we suggest that, you know, you know your own circumstances. If an issue arises, a question arises, please don't hesitate to reach out. We're happy to try to help, to sort of head it off at the pass, if you will. One of the things about our advice is that it really effectively bulletproofs, bulletproofs members of council from a complaint on that particular issue. If, if the facts remain as told to us by the member of council, and if the council member abides by the advice, then the council member is effectively bulletproof from a complaint. So, we really, I think that's one of the takeaways. The other thing I would mention is that I believe in the future, you'll be looking at a, a new code of conduct, probably a revised code of conduct. Our model code of conduct, I think most of you probably heard about it at the Training and Orientation. We know it looks like a long document. There's a lot of robust commentary packed into it. There's, the provisions are probably the same in most codes of conduct, but it's the commentary that we think can add some value. And one of the pieces that we have in our model code that you, we would hope that you would look at is what we call a transparency disclosure. So, where what you do at council is to declare an interest and step away, sometimes, there's that other situation where what you want to say is, "Look, I know somebody may think I have an interest because of these circumstances, but I've looked at it, and maybe I've even reached out to the integrity commissioner. I've got some advice. I will be participating in this matter, but I'm just putting it out there as a transparency disclosure that I don't have a conflict of interest." So, that's in our model code. I just commend you to think about that kind of thing. It can be helpful. And I, I don't think there's anything else I, I wanted to add to that, but I'm here to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I don't really have too many questions. I would just more like to thank the integrity commissioner for taking the time to come and present this in-depth report to us tonight. I think it is important that this report was presented publicly, so the residents of On Sound can understand that open and transparent are more than just words. As the integrity commissioner notes within the report, we live in a time when citizens are skeptical of their elected officials at all levels. So, when we have a report such as this come to fruition, it is important that the public can hear the findings. When we all took the oath of office, we all, we all have sacrificed some of our own personal goals and aspirations in order to put the public good before our own. In this particular case, it was easy after the fact to take a series of unconnected events and create your own story. And as this report has identified, the story was portrayed was just that, a story. I can only hope that those in the media and those who took to social media to prejudge Deputy Mayor O'Leary during the election campaign will now devote as much time and energy proclaiming his innocence of any conflict of interest accusations. The integrity commission, commissioner has expended a great deal of time, energy, and resources on this investigation, and as we have heard tonight, has completely exonerated Deputy Mayor O'Leary. I happen to know that this investigation has taken a significant personal and financial toll on the deputy mayor, and even more so on his family. On behalf of myself and the residents of On Sound, I'd like to apologize for the hardships these accusations have placed on Brian and his family, and commend Deputy Mayor O'Leary for his continued service and dedication to our community. Once again, I'd like to thank the integrity commissioner for everything that they do to help ensure that our elected officials are held to a high standard, that can hopefully one day revert the skepticism citizens have for individuals, trying to help the communities they love, and make the motion to receive the correspondence.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Gregg?
Well, I just have a couple of questions, but they're not directed at, towards the integrity commissioner. Is this the only time to ask them?
If it's about this, then this would be the time.
Here's a, I guess my question here is on finances, because as councillors, the individual here has been found not in contravention of the Conflict of Interest Act. However, we're assuming now he's, he's been at a personal cost, and to me, that's not right. You don't run for council on, on the, you know, on the motive just to, to be there for the remuneration or to, for the, for the monies. And at the same time, you shouldn't be personally affected negatively in, in, under the example like this. So, I, I have a hard time understanding why the individual here is having to be at a loss personally, why we don't have municipal coverage. I can understand where, if you were found to be in contravention of the Conflict of Interest Act, or at fault, that you should be personally maybe liable to some degree, but even then, I think there's some, there is insurance that should be coming into, to play municipally for coverage. So, I'd like some more clarity as to why Deputy Mayor O'Leary should be, should be out the monies personally.
I don't know who's going to answer that question, but I would suggest that's a question for staff to answer at a next meeting. I'm sure it's something that would have to be researched. I have no idea what our insurance, liability insurance would cover or wouldn't cover. Yeah, so, ask Mr. Ritchie maybe to have a look into that.
If I could, your worship, and this is off the top of my head, but I believe if, if a councillor is sued and the city defends them, obviously, we cover that cost, but I can certainly report back to council at the next meeting exactly the circumstances where that would be covered.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Councillor Tamming?
I have a few things to say, and I wonder if your report could be expanded, even if there isn't insurance coverage for this, whether there are any other resources that could be accessed within the budget. I share fully the fellow councillors' comments, Mr. Gregg's comments. I do have some questions, and then I have a statement as well. I wish I could say I'm pleased the, the integrity commissioners have come up all the way from Toronto to speak to this, but I, I have to express my surprise that the complainant is zero for four. These complaints were fairly trivial by any measure, and I don't know how they got past triage. I just don't. You mentioned triage. I don't know how they got past triage. If I could just speak to a few things. During the campaign, several people came up to me as a candidate, not as a lawyer, with concerns. I have to confess at the time that nothing's more fun than getting into a little bit of a swarm on, on social media, and I participated, and I'm embarrassed I did so. I researched the issue during the campaign, all four complaints, and concluded within about a half, half an hour of legal analysis that this was completely unmeritorious. For instance, you cannot have a conflict of interest for property that you acquire after the city votes for the lease. They do have that in Nova Scotia, I believe, some other maritime provinces, but not in Ontario. So, that's a strike. To suggest that a bridge that services hundreds of our businesses, and is our busiest thoroughway, to suggest that that would be anything but a common interest, thereby negating the idea of a personal conflict of interest, would be frankly risible. It was obvious. The bridge could never be that, nor could the turnaround lane, or whatever lane we're calling that, the fifth, the wraparound lane. I am very disappointed that this was not subject to what I understand is available to the commissioners, which is more of an informal complaint procedure, because surely some email exchanges would have got the information in about 18 minutes, which is what I managed to do during the campaign. And surely, if anything deserved to be triaged, or at least subject to an informal complaint process, this was it. So, I just wonder if you could share with the council why? We have a 13-page, 81-paragraph report on Mr. O'Leary. If you could just guide us through why that is, when I took 18 minutes to do my analysis.
So, I would just.
Okay, you two push your little button there, so the red light comes on.
Sure. My apologies. Certainly, I, I think first of all, as I said at the outset, our view of this matter was that on its face, it certainly raised a question that warranted a look. And I would point out, I would hasten to add, that an informal resolution is really only available where both the complainant and the respondent are willing and receptive.
Did you ask?
I, so, if I could just sort of finish my comments, Councillor Tamming. So, certainly, we can't force an informal resolution on any party. And on the face of it, there were certainly questions raised. So, we did not start to look at this matter, as is pointed out in the report, until following the election, because as is good practice at the time, and now as currently is the law, we are required to put our pens down and not investigate during that period of time. I can tell you, there was no willingness whatsoever to find an informal resolution in this matter. We therefore pursued the investigation. In our view, this certainly was not a matter that was easily categorized as trivial, or as litigation lawyers like to talk about frivolous and vexatious. This certainly was a matter that on its face appeared to have some basis in reality, certainly in the facts of the situation. I appreciate the councillor's comments about the timing of the acquisition of the shares. That certainly was not the only matter that we were looking at clearly. This is a report of a complaint that really involved three separate allegations within one complaint. So, if that was simply a matter of acquisition of shares and reviewing the case law, reviewing the legislation, and determining whether or not there is any possibility of a conflict of interest based on prospective ownership of shares, then that might have been much more quickly resolved. I doubt it would have been 18 minutes, but I think we could have resolved it probably in a much shorter amount of time. As it is, we spent somewhat, just under 30 hours between the interviews, reviewing materials, redoing, reviewing the legislation, and determining all of the relevant facts. So, yes, we try to work expeditiously. We try to be cost-effective and efficient. It's, sometimes these things take a little time.
Go ahead, but if, this doesn't need to go on all night. Go ahead.
Well, I am disappointed that it made it past triage. I do have a statement which echoes in part some things that Councillor Dodd said. And I spent some time working on this this afternoon. It is relatively short, and I'd ask council to bear with me. I note, by the way, that no members of the public are with us in terms of the complainants, and I find that, or complainant, I find that disappointing. An appeal for basic Canadian civility. Anyone in this town can launch an ethics investigation. I get it. They have every right to go that route, and during the election campaign, people approached me, as I said, about issues that appear in this 13-page report before us. I, too, was curious to have some answers. And as I said, I found out the law with under half an hour. The optics weren't great, but no laws were broken. And I've reflected on the purient fascination we had with Muddtown during the election. And I wonder, with the benefit of hindsight, why are we so quick in the world of social media to assume the worst of our people? I've not spoken to my fellow councillor O'Leary about this matter since the election. He told me he would like to, but the investigation meant that he was only comfortable speaking through his lawyer. I don't blame him, but it remains a shame in a town like this that we have to lawyer up investigations. But I do know this, that I've got to know Mr. O'Leary, a person who I did not know at all before the campaign. He, like me, is passionate about this town. Like me, he was likely frustrated by the pace of progress on the waterfront. Like me, I suspect he wanted beer on the waterfront and lamented the fact that we have not had a still decent bar there ever. Most restaurants fail. That's why conventional financing is not offered. That's probably why the restaurant hosted a party to rick some funds, to offer some shares. If Mr. O'Leary wanted a sure bet, that he could have invested in Tim's. But in comes Mr. O'Leary and others, and says, "Let's jumpstart this thing, put our money where our mouth is, and kick in some funds." So, he did that. If he predicted the meat frenzy, no doubt the councillor might have declined to invest. But why, again, do we as ratepayers, and I'm referring to emails I received while I've been councillor, why do we jump so quickly from zero to 100? Why is there so little nuance in our dialogue? Why should we have to pay two Toronto lawyers to prepare a massive report and to travel all this distance to attend this meeting when other options were available? We can do better, all of us.
Okay. Carol? Sorry, Councillor Merton?
Through your worship, I want to thank you for providing this information in this report. As a new councillor, this is my first experience seeing the work of the integrity commissioner, although I did attend the orientation session. What I found, other than the findings of no conflict of interest with Deputy Mayor O'Leary, is that you offered recommendations as part of your report, and I think that's a value added to a learning process, painful as I'm sure it's been. So, my question is to the city, because this is not an experience anyone would ever want to have to repeat, but we are all at risk of repeating this. Where are we in relation to the recommendations around conflict of interest? And how can we be sure that we are informed and protected by embedding that, that code of conduct and conflict of interest together? And I'm wondering if someone can, can guide me in that, please?
I don't know who's going to answer that. The clerk puts together, with our approval, council approves a code of conduct, recommendations from the clerk, but that's our code of conduct. It's up to us, us as individuals, to act ethically and accordingly. So, I'm not sure what the city's role is in that, other than when a complaint comes in to contact the integrity commissioner or the ombudsman in whatever order. It's really on us to act accordingly.
So, through your worship, perhaps we could review the code, and based on our learning here and through the clerk, perhaps we could even run it by others, the integrity commissioner, and just to indicate, does this meet the litmus test now, having gone through this experience with what you've discussed around transparency, for us to move forward? It may be perfectly adequate, but I would like to have confidence that that code of conflict is embedded within and meets our needs.
I think that's who you're talking about. Go ahead. I think you're talking about, previously, about reviewing that, so go ahead.
Yes, through your worship, I have been in contact with our integrity commissioners on the best way to update our code of conduct, and that will be brought forward through committee and then also through council.
Thank you.
If, if there's training that they, if council wishes to partake in, that can be looked at if, at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councillor Kapke?
Thank you. I, too, want to thank you for the time you've taken to investigate this matter. My topic of discussion is social media. There are times when social media is a very uplifting and helpful tool to find out about upcoming events, exciting things, and information. However, there are also times when social media can be a detriment, when it becomes infectious with gossip and untruths. This is what I witnessed on this topic. It's, to some, it doesn't matter what you post to try and correct the facts provided. It's not accepted. I just hope those who believe the malicious comments told by the person who started the social media feed on this topic are held accountable to their actions.
Okay. We're good? Thank you very much. I, for one, like receiving reports live. We've got the Rogers cameras running the community watches, and it's nice for the community to be able to hear it. There is so many accusations made. It was election time. Things were heated up, and it's, I think, important that there is a response from you, your organization, from outside looking in that says everything was done properly. And I think that's such an important message to be able to present to the community after the accusation. So, I really appreciate you coming and, and presenting to us and the work that you've done. We've got a motion to receive the report. All in favor? That is carried. Next on our agenda at 9B, the second deputation, this one from our deputy fire chief clerk with regard to 2018 Community Risk Assessment and National Fire Protection Association Guidelines. So, welcome.
Thank you, your worship. If I could just lead into Deputy Clark's presentation. The City of On Sound and the Local Firefighters Association are in the midst of interest arbitration. The city proposes to reduce the minimum on-shift firefighting staffing from five to four. The association's proposal is to raise the total number of firefighters from 26 to 28. to twenty-eight. We have already had four full days before the arbitrator on this issue, and there is another two days scheduled. You may recall the city received a fire services assessment report from KCB Consulting on July twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. In preparing for that report, it was noted that municipalities should complete a community risk assessment by no later than July first, two thousand and twenty-four. The city is fortunate to have over seventy years of firefighting experience between our chief and deputy chief. With this experience available to benefit the ratepayer and to be proactive, deputy chief clerk undertook the community risk assessment. In the KCB report, the consultant refers to reviewing the draft community risk assessment while it was still in progress. At the interest arbitration, the association's advocate has made an issue that Owen Sound council has been asked to support the city position about minimum firefighting staffing without having the community risk assessment presented to them. I believe that members of this council are very well informed about the city of Owen Sound, and very little in this draft risk assessment will come as a surprise to you. Nevertheless, I wanted to be sure that you had the opportunity to appreciate the subject and to make an informed decision. Chief Barfoot and deputy chief clerk are fully aware of the risks for our community and of the strategies in place to mitigate those risks. They are confident that, when necessary, first response with four firefighters instead of five is a safe level of service for Owen Sound and is a level of first response provided in many communities in Ontario. Deputy chief clerk will now present a summary of the draft community risk assessment, and both chief Barfoot and deputy chief clerk will be glad to take questions at any time during and following that presentation. Deputy, over to you.
And I'll get you to push the little button so your red light comes on, and then we can hear you out there in TV land. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your worship and council. It gives me a lot of pressure, pleasure to be here to speak to you about the community risk assessment and fire staffing. I'd like also to thank the city manager and chief Barfoot for assigning me this task and providing me their support all the way through the process. This certainly was a collaborative effort. There's a number of people throughout the city who assisted with, assisted me on this project. Kate Allen provided assistance in helping me interpret some of the BMA information. Curtis Boyce helped in providing me some of the GIS mapping. And my fire prevention division provided a lot of the data for me. So the purpose of a community risk assessment, and really, it started out in a couple different versions. It started out initially in nineteen ninety-eight as a fire risk assessment. And it mentions here a public fire safety guideline. Those are guidelines set out by the Ontario Fire Marshal, and they guide municipality in how they need to conduct their business. Later, in March two thousand and one, it became a simplified risk assessment. And I must say that in twenty-twelve, since twenty-twelve, all of the public safety fire guidelines have been under review. So they're still visible on the website, but they're not enforced. So last year, there was a regulation passed that amended the Fire Protection and Prevention Act, and that mandated a community risk assessment by two thousand and twenty-four. And that's what this is here. Okay? So within, and it's within the actual legislation, it speaks to nine profiles, and these are the profiles, this is what I'm going to go through, at very high level. But the geographic, building stock, critical infrastructure, demographic hazard, public safety, community services, economic, past loss and event history. So again, a lot of this, as the city manager said, is going to seem kind of, I don't know, fairly familiar to you. Lo and behold, Owen Sound has a lot of snow. The greatest one-day snowfall was in nineteen ninety-five. I know this comes as a shock to most of you. So when we're looking at the geographic profile, we're looking at the geography, the topography, and the transportation infrastructure. So this comes out of the maintenance level of service policy, and it basically shows the rate at which the roads have to be maintained. And for us, when we combine this with the topography, obviously, we have steep slopes on either side of the city. That means that affects us in terms of our response time. Sometimes, when there's a snowfall or sloppy roads, we'll have to vary our route to a call. And again, those are things that we have to keep in mind in terms of how we're going or responding to a call. Building stock, the Ontario Building Code divides occupancies into six different categories, and there are assembly, care and detention, residential, business and personal services, mercantile, and industrial. In Owen Sound, this is how the breakdown is in terms of where they fall. In care and detention facilities, in Owen Sound, we have thirteen of these. If we include the hospital, that's fourteen under that category. There was a change since, actually, since this policy was created, or since this document was created, that there's an amendment, again, to the Fire Protection and Prevention Act, which mandates sprinkler systems in all of these buildings. So just earlier this year, all of these buildings have been sprinkled. So therefore, the risk even to those buildings, which are what we would find to be our greatest risk, has changed. Okay? But it makes sense. We know that our community is a little older. And plus, the other thing about Owen Sound is, because we tend to have a rural surrounding communities, we tend to serve a greater community than just Owen Sound. Building construction dates, we do have a handful of buildings that are built in the eighteen-fifties. Of course, the downtown was predominantly built between eighteen eighty and nineteen ten. I like to think that I live in a newer house in Owen Sound, so. Critical infrastructure, these are the types of things that we have to be aware of, that if we lost, would have a real effect on the city. Government buildings, healthcare, telecommunications, utilities, transportation, and water. Okay? When we're looking at the demographics, and I'll point out what seems to be an obvious here, the population that's eighty-five and above, we have a higher percentage than average cities. And that makes sense with, if you would compare a lot of the cities down, say, for instance, in the GTA area, tend to be pretty new. A lot of them have gained, most of their population over the last twenty or thirty years. So it makes sense that Owen Sound would be a little older. It also, I was pleased to see that when you look at the lower categories and some of our youngest residents, that we're not that far behind some of the other populations. And it seems to me to indicate that the population in Owen Sound is well spread out. It's not that we're just clustered at the older. Terms of some of the hazards that are covered in the document, I go over the weather effects, of course, the snow. Forest fires, we have a low risk here because of the rainfall, annual rainfall. Seismic events are a very low risk here. Hazardous materials are a low risk. Relatively, we have very few hazardous materials in Owen Sound or passing through Owen Sound. And of course, we have the water courses, so there is a potential for droughts. Public safety in the document, it's very high level. Pretty much, I've just taken the stuff off their websites, and I speak a little bit about the police and the paramedic service. And that really is background information, say, what are they doing and what does the fire service, and where do they need to fill in the gaps? Community service profile, and I'm just mentioning here, there's a list, you can reference it in the document. The one thing about Owen Sound is, again, like I said, because we have all around a rural community, Owen Sound, I kind of consider, even though it's a small community, is like a hub. So a lot of people come to Owen Sound to be provided different services. So it makes sense that we have a higher proportionate number of services, social services included, within Owen Sound. The economic profile, I talked about the history. For me, it was very interesting. I'm not going to go through it, but it's interesting for me to understand why certain businesses came to Owen Sound and why some of them left. Major employers, of course, major employers in a smaller community have a greater effect when they come and go. Okay? Special events, special events can affect the population levels. There can be surges throughout the year. And financial indicators, and of course, I used a lot of the information from the BMA study. Past fire loss and event history profile, so this is called the heat map, and it basically shows you where the fires are throughout Owen Sound. And it would make sense to presume that the fires are going to tend to be clustered towards the center core of the city. That's where the most people live and where the most activity is. So that is what you would expect. Times of fires throughout the day, they occur, you know, spread out evenly throughout the day, which is a bit of a surprise to me. So in terms of some of the history, in terms of the structures, we can see that if care and detention, so for instance, our nursing homes, retirement homes, or whatever, they're at a higher percentage, and that makes sense. Owen Sound, as we know, have a number of these care and detention facilities, so it would make sense that we would have a slightly higher proportionate number of fires, or even whether they're even small fires occurring in those facilities. On the other hand, if we look at the assembly, business and personal services, and mercantile, we're a lot lower. And that, I think, is, that is because our fire prevention program is so effective. That's what I put that down to. But I have to make one thing clear. When, anytime I'm looking at the data here, it's such a small sample. And that's what we have to realize. It's a very small sampling from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. We're a small community, it's not a large database. So that really does skew the numbers. Okay? So here, you can see a comparison for single-family fire losses versus Ontario to Owen Sound. And what you'll probably notice is that if we're looking at the overall numbers in Owen Sound, they're much higher than Ontario. But again, I'm going to point out the fact, this is a very small sampling. And the other thing, too, is the years that I've chosen, because I was doing it in twenty eighteen, so I didn't have that year, so I started from twenty seventeen, counted back three years, which coincidentally, we hit two events where we had arson sprees coming through the town. And that certainly has thrown the data out in one direction. All right? So just to recognize, you have to balance that. So if I did it again this year and updated it, and then went from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, we'd get completely different numbers. So here, we're looking at some of the sources of ignition. Again, if we compare it to the province, what's noticeable is the high arson count. And again, to put it in perspective, so at twenty-nine percent for Owen Sound versus nine percent for Ontario, again, to put it in perspective, we had those two events, those two arson events. And that really is pulled, when you're looking at such a small data sample, it's really going to kind of skew those numbers. And that's all I am going to basically say about that, unless you have some questions that you want to speak specifically to the community risk assessment.
Deputy Mayor O'Leary.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, Michael, for the report. On page fifteen, you've got on-duty U.S. fire ground deaths per one hundred thousand structure fires, two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen. Why is that in the report?
Hang on one second.
I'm assuming it's relative to something.
That was just merely to show that the different structures, so this is basically showing that larger buildings have a potential for greater fire loss, or, sorry, a greater risk to firefighters. I was just making those connections. Now granted, we don't have a lot of those buildings in Owen Sound, so.
So why do we use the U.S. statistics?
Because a lot of times, I don't have. I would use Canadian anytime I could. You'll notice that, admittedly, when I go through this, a lot of the Ontario data is very old. That's the best I have. The Americans just do such, so much better in terms of the data that they have. And a lot of times, it will be very similar. Proportionally, it'll be different, but, you know, they fight fires similar to what we do. And if that's all I have, that's all I have.
Okay. Page twenty-six, table seven and eight, and that's what you just referred to in your presentation. Ontario statistics, two thousand to two thousand and four, average fire loss in single-family dwellings. Are you talking about a dollar value there?
In the...
Average fire loss rates in a single-family dwelling.
Trying to look where we are. We're on page twenty-six.
Page twenty-six, table seven and table eight.
I guess I am, yes.
Okay, so two things here. If you're talking about a dollar value and you're comparing two thousand, two thousand and four to two thousand and fifteen and seventeen, you're going to have a huge difference in what a building is worth in that many years, I'm assuming. So on table eight, it's Owen Sound, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and seventeen, fire loss rates in single-family dwellings. You go on to say, "When compared to the provincial data, a single-family home in Owen Sound has about three and a half times greater potential for fire than any other single-family home in the province. People living in a single-family home in Owen Sound have three times greater rate of injury than those living in the rest of the province." That just sounds completely inaccurate to me, and it's because of what you have acknowledged. The years you use was between two fifteen and two seventeen, when we had the arson fires.
Right. So it's accurate. It's just the numbers are skewing it one way. I'll agree with that.
Well, just to put things in perspective, I think if New York City was doing a fire risk assessment, they're not going to use nine eleven to compare with the United States statistics. Now, this was catastrophic for Owen Sound. I was born and raised here. Not once can I ever remember us having fires where we brought in the Intertownship Fire Department and Chatsworth. Like, that's a, that was a big deal. And we're using statistics from those two years to compare with two thousand to two thousand and four. To me, it's just like that whole paragraph of three and a half times greater potential, I just think that has to be changed. Do we not have any statistics at all that's closer to two thousand to two thousand and four?
No.
If I could, your worship, I think as deputy clerk has mentioned, now that this report was done and in draft form in twenty eighteen. We will certainly update it in our next version, which will be the version that will be presented to council officially, and we'll probably drop fifteen and have sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen data. So it will change, and no doubt eighteen was a much better year than fifteen, we know that, and our data will look better. But I think what chief clerk is doing is, we can't ignore the community risk, but what we have in our chief and our deputy are the experience to go through those risks and analyze them and realize that, quite frankly, fifteen, and I believe it was seventeen, are for our community outliers. But they can't ignore the data, to put it here. But they realize they're outliers, and the next report, when the deputy updates it, will drop fifteen and have eighteen, correct, deputy?
Yes. So, I mean, the reason why I picked twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen, it is laborious, I can tell you, for me to do this year after year. This is not simple, like where I came from, where I could just pull it up on, push a button or something. I have to go through one file at a time. And twenty eighteen is when I'm doing it, so twenty seventeen was the last full year that I had to do. And I counted back three years. That's what I did. Now, in terms of the Ontario Fire Marshal, I spoke to them directly and asked, "Do you have something more current than this?" And I'm trying to compare apples to apples. They didn't. So that's what they had, that's the best I had. I wish I had something more current, that's all I have.
No, I can appreciate that. I just don't think we should be using them, because it's, it's...
Well, if I don't compare it to anything, then the numbers mean nothing.
Right. So the other thing I wanted to ask about, I know it's only one word, but the Ontario two thousand to two thousand and four is an average fire loss rate in single-family dwellings. In two thousand and fifteen, seventeen, it's a fire loss rate. Or are they both averages and you just didn't use the word average? Because there's a difference. If you're using an average with one, you should use an average with the other.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I think it's meant to be exactly the same. I may have mistitled it. I'll look into that, I'll find that out for you.
Okay. So just to move on then, page twenty-seven, "Changes in construction features over the years have resulted in improvements from a fire safety perspective. In Owen Sound, it's common to find..." In Owen Sound, it's common to find long rows of attached residential and commercial buildings. Some of these buildings have interconnected attic spaces, which, and you use the words, "may" or "may not" be adequately fire-separated. Rather than using words like "may" or "may not," can you not meet with the chief building officer and get more accurate information? I'm sure we have records of renovations that have been made and when certain buildings were constructed, and what the building code was at a different particular times. Would that help you with more specific information to use in this report?
So most of the buildings built in downtown were built 50 years before there was a building code.
Right.
So there was no building code.
Yep.
Typically, back in those days, if they followed any kind of code at all, it was bylaw, by bylaw. Otherwise, they just built the way they thought they did. Now, having said that, there are benefits to old construction. I'm not a great advocate for a lot of the newer construction. There's a lot of safety factors built into the older construction. But again, from a firefighting perspective, we just need to understand the pros and cons of the different construction.
Right.
Right? So, and there are, as I said, some of these common spaces. They exist in some places downtown, and we need to acknowledge that. We need to acknowledge what the potential is, good and bad.
Right. So you could have access to renovations that have been done in the downtown buildings where some of those things have been corrected too?
If they've renovated it, and if there's copies of it, I can find that. But I know that these do exist. There's some of these that do exist. I'm not saying that they're everywhere, but there are some places that they exist. This is all, this is in this document, is just acknowledgement that some of the things that exist.
Right. Okay, and over the last 35 years, I know that actual fires have decreased significantly. I don't know if there's a, whether you use those words, "actual fire," like I'm talking about.
And this is provincial? This is, they're talking from a provincial point?
Yeah. No, I'm not getting anything out of the report, I'm just talking generally speaking. This is me talking. So I know that over the last 35 years, actual fires have decreased significantly. One would think that our fire prevention officer has made a significant difference in preventing fires. Mandatory smoke alarms, changes in building codes, I'm sure have made a significant difference as well. These are all risk-related, and there's nothing in the report that I can see on any of these. Should there be?
Talking about the impact of the...
Well, our fires have decreased significantly over the last 30, 35 years.
Well, I don't have the data in Owen Sound for the last 30, 35 years, so I would be speculating if I would be saying that.
Right.
I'm trying to stick with the data that I have. Now, I'll admit I could count back a couple more years.
Right.
But then I have no data. So then I would be just purely speculating.
So the other things that I mentioned, like the fire prevention officer and smoke alarms and changes in building codes, that shouldn't be mentioned in terms of decreasing the risk?
Again, most of our buildings, if you're talking about the building code, were built before the building code.
Right.
And I'm not necessarily the greatest advocate for some of the newer construction. I think some of the, and I think Chief McDonald would agree with that too, that some of the legacy buildings or some of the older buildings are actually safer, they're easier for us to kind of deal with from a firefighting perspective than some of the newer buildings. So it's not always just a matter of the code. It's just something that needs to be acknowledged one way or the other.
Okay. Finally, I know I might be repeating myself from a previous meeting, but I have to say that after reading the Burke Report, which is the association's guy, correct, at arbitration, who used to be a fire marshal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't realize till I read the Burke Report that a fire marshal has the power to tell a municipality that they have to make changes if you're under-protected. The fact that Georgian bluffs have never been told that they're under-protected and have zero firefighters in their fire station is proof in itself that the number zero is safe. The fact that the Intertownship Fire Department protects the families of 75% of our Owen Sound firefighters is proof that they approve of zero firefighter-fighters at a fire station. So it's just a comment on my behalf, but I would think that there's nothing in this report that has anything to do with us going from five firefighters to four. And with that, I'd be happy to move the recommendation that's in your report. Do you want me to read that or...
No, it's there, but come back, there's others. Counselor Kepke.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I would like some clarification on. You mentioned that you do this report annually, and I know you need to do that to keep your facts up to date. However, is it getting submitted to someone as a requirement under the regulation?
It would be submitted to the Ontario Fire Marshal.
And when does that get submitted?
Once it's all approved.
And it says in the regulation that it has to be submitted by 2024?
Right.
So why are we not using a five-year comparison instead of a two-year, when it was, when you said the figures are skewed because of those two years? Like, why are we doing it? What's the big hurry?
If I could, Your Worship, there is no big hurry. This was, quite frankly, and I somewhat regret it today, but this was our staff trying to be proactive, saying so many times, "We wait till the last minute, and then we rush to do something." We had the opportunity, on behalf of the ratepayer, to have 70 years' worth of firefighting experience here, to give ourselves lead time. This report is a draft. It was always intended to be a draft. There is no rush, however. And, you know, Andy McDonald in the KCB report realized that the deputy was doing this, and he referred to it in his report. The association has said, "Aha! We want to bring this forward. Counselors are aware of the risk. These gentlemen are aware of the risk. This whole report is to make sure that they and the firefighters, when they show up, are aware of what risks might be in this community. These two gentlemen and our staff," and I think they've hit on it, "our fire prevention and our fire safety staff are working diligently to get ahead of these calls before they're called." So you will see this in final form. It will include the 2018 data. I would say, now that the deputy has it up and running, he will probably be renewing that every year. Won't take him near as long. There's a lot of hours have gone into this. But we are here to assure council and the residents of Owen Sound that in 70 years of firefight experience, these two gentlemen, understanding the risk of this community better than anyone else. If you relate this to nothing but the minimum staffing when required of four versus five, they're both telling you and the residents, they are quite comfortable that four, when required, is a safe level of first response. Quite frankly, is there any relation between this and that particular item that is being arbitrated currently? No, there isn't. There isn't. Is that correct, Deputy? Would you say?
I would say there shouldn't be, but recognizing, as the city manager has mentioned, that the advocate for the association wants to make that connection. What they are saying in the arbitration is, "We are not being forthright with you. We are holding information from you." Right? We are denying you that information, but asking you to make a decision. So if we would do that, I would tell you that our chances of success at the arbitration are slim. That's why we're here tonight, is to try to fill that gap.
Counselor Kepke, done. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Tamming.
Thank you again, Deputy Chief. Fascinating production, I mean that, and it was very detailed, and I appreciate that you were going through some old notes to get it done. The facts are important, and I thank you for laying them out, and hopefully people will, at their own leisure, have a chance to read your report and glean from it what they will. I do share Counselor O'Leary's concern about not quite being a good representative sample of the data, but perhaps we can take that up in another forum. I did have a couple technical points, and then I have a very short thing to say. KCB is a company we retain, for those of us who may be listening and don't remember this. The city retained KCB, a consulting group consisting of former chiefs of fire departments, am I correct? And they prepared a very detailed report, some of which is in the agenda item tonight that's available online, correct? You were here a few months ago when KCB itself attended, I believe it was Andy McDonald, I might have been wrong, and presented his report. The reason I'm asking is, at page 52 of the report in our agenda, which is actually at page 242, I don't think you need to turn to it, but KCB says this, and I really wasn't happy with the language. "We recommend that the city weigh the risk of reducing minimum staffing from four to five." Okay? You remember that in the report? And I asked Mr. McDonald a few weeks ago, or whenever he was here, a couple months ago now, I said, "It's really not helpful for you to tell us that we should consider things. I don't like that. If we pay a consultant money, I'd like to see some recommendations." And would you agree with me that a few months ago, he said he absolutely could recommend this as not being injurious to the safety of our community? Do you remember that or not?
I don't recall him saying that specifically.
Okay, well, perhaps I'll follow up with yourself and with staff, because he did say that. So he's not just recommending that we consider it, he actually concluded, was prepared to say at that meeting, that this is not going to damage the safety of this community or impair it in any way, to echo my fellow counselor. I do have just one brief statement to make, and it all relates to this, because to echo the last few sentences of Counsel O'Leary, "We have to get a handle on our costs, and whatever bugabears, whatever fear-mongering gets tossed our way, we have to be able to push back." Owen Sound's fire department appeared in the national press twice in 2013. It appeared in McLean's, and it was not a good look. They concluded, after saying that 29 of our firefighters were making over 100,000 a year, or rather, back then, 25, I think we're at now 100% of them, making over 100 a year, McLean's concluded, "Eventually, something will have to give," and I wish the ratepayers of this town would remember this, "either the relentless demands of our government workers or the solvency of our Canadian jurisdiction. Something has to give." Also, that same year, the Globe and Mail, Margaret Wente, a brilliant columnist, wrote this. Tiny Owen Sound, her word, has 29 full-time firefighters. Last year, 2014, this is her quote in 2013, 25 of them made over 100. And she notes, "The median full-time income of the average Owen Sound resident is less than half of that." So these are very important facts to have before us as we confront the arguments that are being advanced against what I believe to be a very modest proposal at this stage. I hope we get to a hybrid fire department someday, but we're trying to move from four to five, or rather, five to four, and I thank you for your factual explanation of why that should not frighten the ratepayers. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Deputy?
So Deputy Chief Clark, you did this community risk assessment as a routine, has to be done in 2018. You were aware of all the facts that are in it. You're aware of all those facts, and we did have our presentation a couple of weeks ago, which you felt comfortable going from five to four. If we're short on overtime, it's not five to four at all times, just to be clear. And with the knowledge of this report that you had, you gave that recommendation. So I'm going through this report, and I'm not seeing anything, from my point of view, that changes, would change my vote on that. I'm still seeing it remaining the same. I recognize the risk that you've set out in that report. I'm recognizing the data that you've gone through. I'm recognizing from our discussion that night, if there is a fire, the captain on the scene makes a decision, whether they enter the building, whether it's safe or not, whether he's got two, whether he's got four, whether he's got 10 firefighters, he makes the decision if it's safe, and is going to continue to apply that discretion. And that's, nothing really changes from what I see with the report in front of me. I come back again and say that I have the most confidence in our firefighters, in their abilities, in their training, in everything that they do. I've seen it for over the last number of years when we've had those arsons. They were good. They were really good. They saved buildings. I have ton of confidence in the decisions that they make as firefighters, and I have ton of confidence in they're making those right decisions, whether there's five at the door, whether there's four, and again, if it's a serious fire, that they're going to have more coming in. So I'm not seeing anything in this report, glad that you've presented it, but I'm not seeing anything in there that would change my mind. I don't know about my fellow counselors, but I think we're, thanks for presenting it. I think we're all still on the same page. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think back four and a half years ago to a fellow that lives around the water treatment plant, and he told me at his door, I've been, you know, he's lived here for decades, and that he could recall when the fire department went screaming past his house, literally, every day. And these are back in days when people heated their houses with wood, with open fireplaces. You know, we had Christmas trees that lit up in the fires with bad light bulbs through the 70s and 80s. I mean, things have changed so drastically. And, you know, the inclusion of the fire inspection and all the deterrents that we have in place, and this is just a very good report that shows the sprinkler systems and other safety measures that are now incorporated into building design. So I think it's an excellent report. It doesn't change anything. I just think back to that fella. Every day, I remember the fire truck screaming past my house. It's not like that anymore. I think the numbers in here, they have to be in there. Yeah, it's a small sample, but you have to extend it out to be 100,000, the same as our comparators. I think probably 9/11 would be included in the New York Fire Stats, because it's something that gives you an ability to measure your reaction and assess how your fire department handled such an extraordinary circumstance. I was in Boston, and I saw a police response that I hope no one ever has to see. And I'm sure that's included in their annual assessment of how they respond to extraordinary events. So, you know, this is, there's nothing in here that changes my mind. I think, in fact, if you didn't include those numbers, you can audit everything. I don't think you could audit that adequately without having those numbers in there. It has to be in there, it's provided, we've got the footnotes or a paragraph to speak to why the anomaly's there. But I think it's a good report, and I thank the Deputy Chief and the Chief for putting it together and it coming for our information, so...
Anyone else wish to speak to it? Seeing none, going back to Deputy Mayor O'Leary, you want to move the recommendation? I'm not sure if we did. We did. Okay. Any questions about the recommendation? Go ahead, sorry.
I still have the fire staffing models to go through. I apologize for this.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm gonna, you know...
Just wait then.
And then the recommendation will come at the end of that.
Okay, good, sorry.
This needs to be covered as well.
We're jumping the gun on you.
Does it come up there? So this was also covered in great depth throughout the arbitration, so this is separate from the other. These are some of the details, and it's going to actually add a little bit more detail to what was spoke about in the KCB report as well. I'm going to go through some of this stuff, and again, ad nauseam, I apologize for this. But it's a matter of getting it out there so that we're not holding anything back. It's really our point. This is what we're trying to do by doing this. Okay, so we talked a lot about the impact of moving from five to four, and as Worship has mentioned, I mean, for me, this was obviously nothing new. I certainly had this document before I had ever spoke at our last presentation. I'm confident with, you know, us going to five to four. This is obviously from the KCB projections. He's using the history and projecting forward that, you know, if you use, if history would repeat, it would only be between 14 and 30%. That's his, those are his numbers. You would be going to four, and otherwise, you'd be staying at 70 to 86%, you know, at five. Those are his numbers. But I can tell you that I'm confident here, the fire chief is here today, and I'm sure he would, he can speak for himself, but I'm sure he's also comfortable in going from five to four. That's not a concern. This is, I have to give a bit of an explanation here. This was covered, and it was an issue that was constantly brought up throughout the arbitration, so I'm going to lay it all out there so that you're familiar with. And it has to do with this concept of flashover, all right? And there was a couple underwriter laboratories, reports, and really what they talked about is the side-by-side modeling that they did, using a legacy home versus a modern home. So I apologize again for this detail. Flashover, something that's not sometimes well-understood by firefighters. It has to do with the quantity of plastics that we have in a modern house. So even if we looked around this building here, this room, between the latex paint that's on the walls, or the plastic counters that you have, this podium here, you know, is wood look, but it's all glue and resin, the carpeting, the chairs you're sitting on, everything, we're pretty much surrounding ourselves here with our plastics. Another name for those, if a chemical name is a polymer, common polymers that we'd be familiar with are things like polyethylene, polybutylene, polypropylene. If you broke those down into their constituent monomers, okay, those are the chemicals that they start out... out as, as monomers, like ethylene gas, which is a flammable gas, which they polymerize into the plastic. What happens in a fire, the reverse happens. Those plastics break down into flammable gases, and it'll fill an environment up with a flammable gas, and they'll potentially ignite. In any modern house, you'll probably always have a flashover. It's just a matter of time. Flashover temperatures are probably about four times where you would cook a turkey at. So a firefighter in a flashover, if they're wearing a mask, the mask will, if they are in a flashover, the mask will melt out. They'll probably not survive it. It's a reality of modern-day firefighting, all right? What this is showing is if you took a traditional home, all right, with wood furniture and cloth upholstery, for instance, a flashover would take about 29 and a half minutes, whereas in a modern house, it'll be under five minutes, potentially three and a half minutes. That is something that every firefighter is aware of, all right? What I need to point out is, even though there's been a lot of discussion of this in the arbitration, this really isn't affected whether you're going with five or four. The same hazard exists. So whether you're going with five people or four people, the same hazard exists. Okay?
If I could, Worship, and as a layman, when certainly the chief and deputy explained this to me, it seems kind of new information to me, but I think that's why in modern houses, I can tell you, our building department insists on fire separation. In modern structures, manufacturing structures, home for the age, they insist in sprinklers. We have an aggressive fire inspection and fire safety program in this town. So these are the steps that I think Owen Sound has taken, quite frankly, far and above what many in Ontario have taken, to prevent fires in the first place. Education, training our firefighters, but also training through the school programs, everyone to say the first thing to do, get out of that house, get out of that building. We will, you know, we will do what we can. So much of this, again, comes to the mitigation tools these gentlemen have in place.
So Deputy Chief Clark, I'm going to interrupt you again here. When you're talking about a legacy house, what happens when there's a flashover?
So flashover, basically what you would see is fire from floor to ceiling.
In the room where it started?
Mm-hmm.
And then?
You don't want to be in that room.
Okay.
So if a firefighter is in that room, it's not good. At Second Avenue East Fire, there was a flashover. When they opened up the door, it flashed over, over their heads. But it, whether it's in Georgian Bluffs, or whether it's in Owen Sound, or Toronto, or any other town, where it's a modern house, flashovers are going to occur.
Okay, and once you have a flashover, whether it be a legacy room or a modern room, is there any difference between the two after they flash? I don't know if I'm asking the right question.
They often say that the fire has gone from, kind of is built up, and then it's going to a free burning stage. It tends to be, but recognize too, you know, in addition to what city managers mentioned, we've also changed our tactics, our firefighting tactics. So we use, employ positive pressure ventilation, which we didn't do years ago. We use what's now called the transitional attack. So we attack from, so we acknowledge these things. We recognize these things, and we've also modified our firefighting tactics to kind of address those risks.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Talk about the National Fire Protection Association. It's basically a body, it's a global body, but it's based down in the States, and they create the standards for anything to do with firefighting. If it's talking a sprinkler system, the gear that we wear, how we organize a fire service, everything is there. My colleague, Chief Matt Peg, used to refer to it as a compendium of best practices, and that's essentially what it is. Some of them may be referenced by legislation or regulations, but for the most part, they're just standards out there for whether you choose to adopt them or not. So the main one for staffing is, and that was referenced in the KCB report, is NFPA 1710. So the first edition of this came out in 2001, and they basically refresh about every four years, and the last edition is 2016. So initially, it was based on a 2,000-square-foot house, two-story, no basement, and with no exposures, meaning the neighbors are far back, so there's no risk of fire spreading to the neighbors. Seems like an unusual house for Owen Sound, but in the United States, this would be a typical home without a basement, all right? Most homes in the United States don't have basements. Okay, so some of the lines out of the NFPA, 5.2.2, talks about staffing, the number of on-duty fire suppression members shall be sufficient to perform the necessary firefighting operations, given the expected firefighting conditions. These are things that are considered, obviously, by the fire chief when he sets up the staffing. 5.2.2.1, these numbers shall be determined through task analysis that take the following factors into consideration: life hazard to the populace protected, provisions of safe and effective firefighting performance conditions for firefighters, potential property loss, nature configuration hazards and internal protection of the properties involved, types of fire ground tactics and evolutions employed as standard procedure, type of apparatus used, and results expected to be obtained at the fire scene. So 5.2.3.1 talks about fire companies. Fire companies are what we would more traditionally call here as a crew, and here, they're talking about a typical basic firefighting crew that is riding on an engine company, okay? An engine company, engines, we would more likely call a pumper, if you're familiar with our pumpers, okay? So it's a pumper crew. And it says, these companies shall be staffed with a minimum of four on-duty members. Okay, and this thing here, it's long, and I'll just kind of cut to the chase. It basically says that your company, or your first engine crew, can be on two or more vehicles. And that's essentially the way we operate in Owen Sound. So the first truck is coming with three people on it, the next one is coming with one. That's your fire company. So that's your engine company. So we're in compliance with this part of it. It's unusual, the way we do it here, relative to bigger communities, but certainly the norm for smaller communities. So, and then there's one fifth person coming on another truck. So that's certainly, we're in compliance with this part of it. And this is a very important part of this standard. So then they go into, and this is what was in the KCB report, he was breaking down, but what he did is, he actually picked and chose a little bit through this. I'm going to kind of go through the whole thing, and we'll talk about it. So basically, what this is, is saying how you might assign people as a typical way of assigning them, not necessarily the way you would assign them at this 2,000-square-foot house fire. So number one, establishment of an incident commander, that's a person in charge. And here in red, you can see the number of people that they're speaking about. So one, establishment of an uninterrupted water supply, that was very important when Chief McDonald was speaking about it. Establishment of effective water flow from two handlines, so they're talking four people. Provision of one support member for each attack, and backup line, that's two. Provision of at least one victim search and rescue team, so they're talking two people. Provision of at least one team consisting of two people to raise ladders and perform ventilation. If an aerial is used in operations, it's one. An establishment of an IRIC, which stands for an initial rapid intervention crew, that's a crew that's set up to rescue other firefighters, and there's two. So that totals to 14 to 15, all right? Recognizing that, for large communities, all right, the community I came from, they could certainly supply this on a first response. Other communities will not be able to do that. Smaller communities will not be able to do that. That's not the norm. So they'll supply the one crew initially, and then the other crews will arrive whenever they get there, all right? That's just the norm of the community that we live in, in terms of its size. NFPA 1710 goes further to talk about, talks about times, all right? So just to break it down, the alarm handling time is the time that it fire dispatch, from the time they pick up the phone, to the time they push the tone and it comes to us. And it says that you should be trying to get that call out in 64 seconds, 90% all of the time, or 90% of the time, or better. Then, when the firefighters hear the first tones to the time that they're on the truck and the wheels start to turn, 80 seconds, 90% of the time. Then the time for the first truck to get to the scene is four minutes or 240 seconds. And then the balance of the response is 480 seconds. So there it is, all kind of told up. What I'll say to you is, for smaller communities, certainly, we would attempt to achieve that for the first crew, but it's not realistic. There would be very few communities or very few fire services in Ontario that would achieve all parts of that. Okay? So, you know, there are certain parts of this, we have to say, for on the first crew, that's achievable, and we can do that. Getting the first crews there in a certain time period, that's achievable, and we should strive to do that. For the balance, it's beyond what a small community could achieve. It's not realistic. It's something to aspire to, but it's just not realistic. And it certainly wouldn't be ever enforced upon us, but I can tell you the rest of it, the fire marshal is looking to measure us to. So they're looking to measure us to a lot of the other stuff. That is considered the industry best practice. Okay? In the latest edition, they went further than just looking at a single-family dwelling. They also talked about strip malls, three-story garden stall apartments, and high-rise. So even if we look at this, so a strip mall, they're looking for 27 to 28 firefighters. That would mean, for any fire service, sending seven trucks on the first dispatch. There's very few departments that could do that, or do do that, okay? Or likewise, three-story buildings, seven crews, or high-rise, they're talking, you know, from four, or sorry, from 10 to 11 crews. There's no fire service. Toronto wouldn't do that. I doubt Toronto does the other two, all right? So what I'm trying to point out here is, while there's a standard out there, it's not even expected that everybody's going to achieve every part. It's something to aspire to. There are parts that we adopt, and there's parts that we don't. In terms of the total, say, if we looked at the total response to the single-family dwelling, not every time do we ladder the, ladder a building. The fire chief can, I'm sure, will agree with that. There's certain times we apply it. It's giving you a basic number to say, you know, this is a typical response. Try to aspire to this. This is what it is. And typically, it's once those things start to become adopted by the departments around, then it starts to become a best practice, worthy of adopting. All right? So counter to that, there was a lot of pushback when the first standard came out, the first 17 standard came out, and within the province, there was a lot of pushback. So the Ontario Fire Marshal came out with their counter to it, which we know is 10 and 10. And so that, in 10 and 10, which is another public fire safety guideline, says that there's a minimum of four firefighters on the first responding vehicle, and then you need to get 10 firefighters there in 10 minutes. Okay? Now, understand that after, as I said, after 2012, all of the public fire safety guidelines are under review. So what happened, and this again was discussed, this comes more from Fire Marshal Patrick Burke's days. This is his response to it, because what he said was, told us in the arbitration, is the fire chief from Toronto pushed back that 10 and 10 wasn't sufficient. He says, this is going to give some councillors ammunition to reduce staffing in Toronto. So he wanted something a little bit more bolstered up, and this is what they came up with. And just to, and I don't need to go through this all in great detail, but what he's picked is three different risk levels. He says, the fire, the residential structure fire that I spoke about would be at moderate risk. And they basically show a range, the lower emergency response level up to an upper emergency response level, 16 to 43, recognizing that there would be very few departments that could actually achieve this. The one thing about this standard, though, there's no time attached to it. So even if we said the 43, that's achievable in Owen Sound, because we use mutual aid, we'll get them there. There's no time as part of this. So this is, we just wanted to kind of lay everything out there, that this is the discussion that's going on in front of the arbitrator, so that you are familiar with all of it. All right? And I hope that we, you know, kind of leave you with a level of comfort, is what we're trying to do here. And there's that. Round two.
Good. Now, any further questions? Seeing none. Now, can we do the recommendation? If you've got a question, go ahead.
Madam Clark, could we have a recorded vote, please?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Counselor Dodd?
In favor.
Counselor Gregg?
In favor.
Counselor Hamley?
In favor.
Counselor Kepke?
In favor.
Counselor Merton?
In favor.
Counselor Tamming?
In favor.
Counselor Thomas?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor O'Leary?
In favor.
Mayor Boddy?
In favor.
The resolution is carried with nine in favor and zero opposed.
Don't have my button on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're now at number 10, which is a public question period. I don't see anybody running quickly to the microphone. Number 11, correspondence received, and we have no correspondence received, which is presented for consideration. Number 12 is reports of city staff, and I think we're starting with Ms. Coulter on a site plan approval for 1185.
Yeah, I just have a pecuniary interest to declare on this, owing to the fact that I have a close relative that owns property in the vicinity.
Okay, good. And I do note that Counselor Hamley and Counselor Thomas have both joined us. Ms. Coulter?
Thank you, Worship. This is an application for site plan approval by Gray Bruce Property Rentals, Inc., for the former Strathcona School, which has been vacant since 2008. The subject lands are located on the east side.
Pam, sorry, just hold on. Sorry, guys. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. The subject lands are located in the 1100 block on the east side of Fourth Avenue East, and the site is well-located with respect to two bus routes and close to the downtown core. The proposal involves a conversion of the existing school to include 68 residential apartment units, the construction of addition over partial stories of the building with a peaked roof, so that ultimately, it will be a three-story structure plus a basement. There'll be patios and balconies at the rear, looking at the tree ravine. There'll be an elevator to all floors. There's a parking lot that will be developed with 86 parking spaces, including four barrier-free, and I would note, there's two electric car charge stations. There'll be an outdoor amenity area, as well as a bike parking area, and there's strong pedestrian connections to the street. There is a fire route at the front of the building, outdoor garbage and recycling facilities as well. You have the landscape plan before you, and you can see that the site is attractively landscaped, especially adjacent to Fourth Avenue, with trees very similar to the Metro lot, and it will create a strong street edge. A number of supporting documents were, and studies were submitted with the application, most notably elevation drawings and urban design and shadowing study. That was important to the Committee of Adjustment in considering the request for variance in terms of height, a geotechnical study in stormwater. In terms of the process, following a pre-circulation, the application for site plan and minor variance were made together on February 21st. There has been an application heard by the Committee of Adjustment, and we have presented this through accessibility. In terms of the provincial policy statement, the proposed redevelopment of a former school, having access to full municipal services with urban amenities, including public transit and direct access to the downtown, is certainly supported by the provincial policy statement for the creation of small, strong communities. In terms of the official plan, the lands are designated institutional and hazard, and the official plan does allow for the conversion of institutional uses for residential. The proposal achieves the official plan requirement in terms of intensification and infilling of a non-residential use, or a non-conversion of a non-residential building for residential uses. The site is zoned institutional, and it's zoned hazard at the rear associated with the slope. The proposal does comply with all site and building regulations of the city zoning bylaw. As I mentioned, the site will be attractively landscaped with trees, as well as a number of shrubs. There's 86 parking spaces. There are eight under agreement with a separate property, so there'll be 70. There are eight under agreement with a separate property, so there'll be 78 available and 68 are required. And as I mentioned, those accessible spaces are located proximate to the main entrance of the facility, near the elevator, and there's a sidewalk all along the front or the east-facing side of the building. In terms of the Gray Salba Conservation Authority, they did review the slope, the TRO study, and the geotechnical study, and they supported the development of those at-grade patios and balconies on the east side of the building. So, your worship, the recommendation is that council would approve the site plan by GM Blue Plan, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix A, and that council would approve a bylaw to authorize the execution of that site plan agreement.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Counselor Dodd?
Thank you, Worship. I'd be more than happy to move this recommendation, and this is something that members of that neighborhood have been very eager on about getting developed. So to see that we've got the site plan in front of us is extremely exciting, and wish Mr. Burke bring the best of luck.
Call the question, all in favor. That is carried. 12B, I think, is Ms. Allen, investing in candidate infrastructure program, or is it Dennis?
I'll present the report, and if there's any questions, I may defer to Dennis.
Okay.
On March 14th, we were notified by the Minister of Infrastructure of $30 billion made available over the next 10 years through the combined funding agreements with the federal and provincial government and their bilateral agreement. In this program, there will be four streams, rural and northern, public transit, community culture and recreation, and the green stream. So currently, the rural and northern intake are open for application, as well as public transit. The other two will be available later this year. On March 18th, the guidelines became available, and staff have met on two separate occasions to review potential projects to bring forward to council, to recommend for applying under this grant. The current intake will prioritize projects that improve transportation infrastructure through investment in road, bridge, air, and marine infrastructure. It's open to all municipalities with populations under 100,000, and the municipality must contribute a share of 17% up to the maximum grant amount of $5 million. Plus, we would be responsible for any spending over and above the $5 million. Substantial completion must be done by October 2026, and applications are due on May 14th of 2019. So I'll just highlight some of the things that staff kept in mind as we were sort of looking for projects that would fit under this. The grant is restricted to roads, bridge, and marine and/or air infrastructure. So while bundled projects will be eligible, so that means projects that have components that are water, sewer, landscaping, those projects would be eligible. Only the road-related costs or bridge-related costs would be funded under this grant. For that reason, staff focused on projects that will require significant investment in road construction, up to the maximum of $5 million. The timelines for the project were generous, with completion dates on or before October 31st to 2026. So with this extended timeframe, we were able to consider projects outside of our current five-year capital plan. And projects were considered on the basis that total funding eligibility would be maximized. So this is one thing I wanted to stress, that there are a number of smaller projects that are very high on our priority scale on our five-year capital plan. However, the total dollars required would not maximize the full value of this grant. And so these high-priority projects will be kept in mind for future grant opportunities with lower funding limits. So the four projects that staff have shortlisted, and the first one is the one that we are recommending for council's consideration, however open to input and questions, that project would be the full reconstruction of Second Avenue East from 11th Street East to 18th Street East, or the Bay Shore Community Center. And that would be full reconstruction of the road, replacement of the underground infrastructure, storm sewers, as well as some landscaping and streetscape improvements. And this really would be an extension to the downtown master plan that we're currently sort of enhancing as we go through the Downtown River Precinct. The start date for this project would not be until 2024 as far as construction, and it would wrap up in time for the substantial completion date of 2026. The total estimated project cost is $16,660,000. However, that's broken down in the finance section of this report into the different cost categories. So $8 million would be, roughly would be eligible for that grant funding, of which $4,150,000 could be funded through the grant. Water and wastewater each were allocated $2,580,000, and storm sewer another $3.4 million for a total of 60 and 660. So the grant would fund $4,150,000. We would utilize water and wastewater rates to fund just over $5 million. And this number could be subject to change, but I would suggest that we would bank up several years' worth of gas tax in order to offset some of the costs with gas tax funding. And then there would be a remaining balance in this sample to fund through debenture or tax contribution of $6 million. The other two projects, or three projects that were considered and included, just to give council some background of other projects that we looked at, were widening 16th Street East, including rehabilitation and new sidewalk construction from 9th Avenue East to 18th Avenue East, which is where Heritage Grove is, or Smart Centers. We also looked at 28th Avenue East and 26th Street East, so reconstructing those to bring them to an urban standard from what they currently are now, which is gravel. And then finally, 9th Avenue East reconstruction from 17th Street East to 28th Street East, and that would include full reconstruction of the road to a full urban standard as well.
Ms. Allen, when they say roads, that includes curbs?
It should, yes. Curbs, sidewalks, those road-related attached.
Streetlights? Busco lanes? How far can we push that? How far, how wide does this go, I wonder?
Thank you, through your worship, that would include, if we wanted to include bike lanes, it would include that as well. It form part of the surfacing and considered active transportation, so it should qualify.
So we can't go wide enough to cover a parking lot at a Bay Shore Community Center, anything like that?
An engineer, we can just about justify anything.
Good answer. Other questions? Seeing none. Go ahead.
Just clarity, Ms. Allen, if you could. They're funding a project that, if this goes ahead, it's, the total cost is $16 million. Four of that is from Ontario. Am I correct?
Just over $4 million would be split between the feds and, sorry.
Just over $4 million would be split between the feds and the province, and that represents 83% of $5 million.
And 1.3 comes from gas tax, or is that the feds that you mentioned?
It would be federal gas tax, and that's proposing that we would allocate two years' worth of gas tax to this program.
Okay. And then the balance, which is over $10 million, would be paid by the rate, I may be wrong, I don't know, I just looked at this now. The balance would be paid by the rate payers of the town plus the water users?
That's correct.
Okay. How does that compare to, I'm new to council, as some of us who are new might find this interesting. How do those ratios compare to other projects that have been funded in the past? Is it comparable?
I'll maybe try to help Ms. Allen on this one. When we get to, I'm going to, quite frankly, these are getting into mega projects, and there is, there's never one comparable from one to the other. The good thing, this is an expensive project. It's a project, when we discussed it, as a team, it's going to have to be done. The services there, the water and wastewater, they are not going to last forever. That's probably the real driver. You can drive on rough roads. Those roads are rough. We'd love to repair them, but the fact is, we know probably in this next timeline, those services will go, will be in there replacing those. We may as well do it all at once. But it's expensive. We would look forward in 2024, 2025, when we actually had to finance this. I'm certain, and Ms. Allen checks our debenture schedule, we will have some debentures falling away. We'd love to not have to re-debenture and actually use that in ongoing capital, but we've often had that theory, and unfortunately, we have a mega project comes along, and we go, we have to debenture it, because we've got to get it done. But this is an expensive project. It's the one we think is probably the best bang for a buck if we get the money, but council may not feel comfortable, quite frankly, with that kind of investment, and may pick one of the others, where you don't have to pick up the rate payer committed to finding that money. So, we're not, it's a very difficult decision when you're talking, you know, nearly a $17 million projected budget. We realize that. So there is no right or wrong. We want to make sure we get our best application in before the deadline.
Counselor Hamley?
I'm just trying to, how, like, how far do we have to go along before we know that we get the grant? Like, do we get up the creek without a paddle at some point?
No, we would know if we were getting the grant by the end of this year. We're not planning to commence any of this project until 2022, as far as starting the EA. So there'd be lots of time to plan how we're going to fund the unfunded portion.
Counselor Hamley, worth more than sound. We've always got an extra paddle on the boat. Somebody want to move it? Or pick one, pick a project? What are we doing? Go ahead, Counselor Gregg.
Well, I'll move it on the basis that, just I think, in the last two weeks, Dennis with his team actually located a significant water main break along that stretch of road, and it's part of ongoing efforts across the city to reduce the amount of leakage and stress that the current system is. So I don't, I don't favor any of the other projects above that. It's a heck of an investment, but we do know that at some point, you've got to put a shovel in the ground to undertake the work necessary. So I'll move the recommendation.
Call the question, all in favor. That is carried. 12C in the agenda from Ms. Blimfield with regard to property.
Thank you, Worship. The Downtown River Precinct project is set to begin this spring, and in order to realign the road behind City Hall, a small piece of land needs to be acquired from Hallridge Holdings Limited. Negotiations have taken place between Hallridge Holdings and the city, and both parties have agreed to the city acquiring Part 1 as depicted on the reference plan, and Hallridge Holdings being granted a permanent easement over Part 2. The recommendation in the report is to direct staff to bring forward a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the necessary documents to complete the transaction.
Okay. Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, Worship. I'll move the recommendation.
Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. 12D, is that you again? Go ahead.
The city and Heritage Grove Center, Inc., have agreed to exchange lands. As indicated on the reference plan, Part 1 and 3 will be transferred to Heritage Grove, and Part 2 and 4 will be transferred to the city. In drawing up the closing documents, it was discovered that the subject lands form part of an open highway and need to be stopped up and closed before the transaction can be completed. In accordance with the disposition of land bylaw and the notice bylaw, notice needs to be provided should any part of a highway be permanently closed. The report indicates notice will be posted on the website, but it will also be published in the Sun Times. The recommendation in the report is to direct staff to write notice of the city's intention to stop up and close the highway, and should no concerns be raised, bring forward a bylaw to stop up and close the highway.
Counselor Gregg?
We've been at this job for several years, so whatever it takes to move this slow turtle along the path here, I'll gladly move.
Further discussions, seeing none. Call the question, all in favor, and that is carried. 12E, Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor O'Leary, report from the county.
Thank you, Worship. The county received a plan of subdivision application for property in Georgian Bluffs just south of Cobble Beach. Initially, this proposal was to create a total of eight single-detached lots to be serviced with municipal water and septic systems. Georgian Bluffs have since negotiated with Cobble Beach to assume the sewage treatment system from Cobble, which will allow the township to connect to other developments. Based on that, the applicant submitted a revised application proposing 29 lots to be serviced on full municipal services. There's a motion to reduce the farm tax rate from 25% to 24. Kevin Weppler introduced Peter Freese from Municipal Tax Equity Consultants. Peter provided an overview of property tax and assessments. He noted that assessments are based on market value, assessments are updated, are updated every four years. Mr. Freese discussed the farm class and noted that multi-portion farms with homes experience a lower overall assessment increase. His presentation referred to the current system as fair. Director of Corporate Services Director Kevin Weppler recommended no changes, and the general consensus among the treasurers of the lower-tier municipalities was to leave it the same. That said, council voted to lower the farm rate, farm tax rate from 24%, 25% to 24 of the residential rate and the tax policy rate. It has very little impact on the On Sound taxpayer. It means we will see a slight increase in our share of the county levy, which is approximately $12,000. That will be shared by all On Sound classes. And for the record, both Mayor Body and myself voted against lowering the farm tax rate. Thank you, Worship.
Any questions? Seeing none. Oh, there is one.
Wouldn't you have a recorded vote at the county? Is it done on assessment, weighted assessment?
No, of course it's done by population.
Population.
It's democracy. Consent agenda.
Through your worship, on the consent agenda this evening is a report respecting the 2019 art crawl and a report respecting the 2019 household hazardous waste municipal participation agreements. There's a flag-flying request from Gray Bruce Pride, and there are minutes for receipt from the Library Board, Gray Salba Conservation Authority, and the DIA Board. The DIA Board minutes are repeated from a previous meeting, so they do not need to be received, and, which is reflected in the motion provided to Counselor Merton. Lastly, there is correspondence, which is presented for the information of council. A full listing is available at 13G.
Good, thank you. Go ahead.
Move by myself that city council receive items 13A to 13G, save and accept item 13F on the consent agenda dated April 15th, 2019, and further that the recommendations contained in reports 13A and 13B be approved.
All in favor? That is carried. I just note the art crawl is the crafts and artists that set up around the, around the market on Saturday mornings. This year are going to be across the river in front of the library along by the Senetaph. Household hazardous waste, again, we collect that monthly in agreement with our other municipalities, Chatsworth, Georgian Bluffs, Gray Highlands, Meaford, and West Gray. Good program. We've got the ability and the buildings, and it works really well for our neighbor municipalities too. Also approved, community flag-flying request from Gray Bruce Pride for June 7th to 21st. Next is the On Sound North Gray Union Public Library Board minutes. Anything to present? Counselor Thomas?
Your worship, a lot of those minutes are old now. They a lot relate to around the building. The one thing of note, we did have a water main break on Second Avenue West in January, which resulted in an indoor swimming pool in the lower level of the library, which was dealt with by city staff quite quickly, and no damage to any books or materials, thankfully. And the ground, though, became so saturated that water is still leaking into the basement at the library at present, though it is all under control. A lot of talk through all of these minutes about the main floor renovation, which we had an official opening for a couple of weeks ago, and if you haven't been in yet to see the library's main floor, I would encourage you, because finally, the open cinder blocks are painted. Hallelujah! It's been my goal since I joined the library board in 2000. So happy to have it there. Beautiful new decks created by wood artist Stephen Hogbin, and I did announce that night that my next goal was to get a ceiling in there. So we'll see how that goes. I think it'll be another 15 years or so, but we'll get there, your worship.
And I'm hearing raves about Mr. Hogbin's art creation there. Lucky to have him. He's nationally known, if not internationally known, for his woodworking ability. Any questions for Counselor Thomas? Seeing none. Next is Conservation Authority.
Thank you, Worship. March 1st was the AGM for the Conservation Authority. Highlights and accomplishments of 2018 were presented, focusing on the five strategic goals of Conservation Authority. Better monitor and manage flood risk, enhance Gray Salba Conservation land management and natural heritage preservation, support the development of watershed plans with municipalities, improve water quality, and strengthen environmental education and communication. A report was presented on the invasive species pilot project undertaken with municipalities, which was coordinated- which was coordinated approach to understand and address invasive species throughout the watershed and provide assistance and expertise to municipalities. The most common invasive species found were phragmites, wild sherville, European buckthorn, periwinkle, and wild parsnip. The pilot also included phragmites control using a still long-reach hedge trimmer, and Gray County provided funding for the delivery of invasive species mapping on their trails and properties. Provincial approval is pending of a herbicide to use over water on phragmites. Guest speaker Rob Messervy spoke on the evolution of Conservation Authorities and their critical role now and into the future as our leading conservation agencies. Members reviewed the 2019 budget of just over three million dollars and confirmed the municipal levy towards this budget, along with matched provincial funding of just under seventy-two thousand dollars. However, recent provincial budget announcements may see this amount reduced by fifty percent, which will prove challenging. Bids were reviewed for agricultural leases of seven properties, and tenders resulted in an increase of annual lease revenue of eighteen thousand five hundred. Members were provided with an update on a meeting with Minister Phillips, who explained the Maiden Ontario Environmental Plan, which includes the roles and mandates of Conservation Authorities, and to assist with the development of regulations for the revised Conservation Authorities Act.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. So we're down to number fourteen A on our agenda, starting with the minutes of Corporate Services. Counselor Dodd.
Thank you, your worship. This was the first meeting that we had the nomination of chair, so I'd also like to congratulate Counselor Tamming as being nominated for vice chair. We had three reports quick from the Director of Corporate Services regarding 2018 BMA study, the 2018 year-end operating capital report, as well as the 2019 tax policy. And I'm going to actually shift over to the Director of Corporate Services, because she's one hundred times smarter than I am. And this was the most important part of the Corporate Services meeting, I believe, that you would take from most of our yearly meetings, because this really breaks into, one, what is our BMA report looking year over year in comparison to other surrounding municipalities? The second one is looking at what our overall surplus and deficits were, and then the final one was actually how we implicate our tax ratios. So Director of Corporate Services will definitely go in more detail than I can provide.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll go quickly through the first two. The first one is the BMA study, and this is just sort of a summary of the study that we receive and participate in annually. It really is for context. It's a tool that council can have as a resource for decision-making as you go throughout the year. It's nice to refer back to it and see sort of where we fit amongst some of our comparators. Some of the key values that came out of the report, taxes on a single-detached bungalow in the city of On Sound in 2017, so this is using 2017 data, would have been three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two compared to the southwest Ontario average of three thousand ninety-three dollars. So we are seeing higher than the average taxes on that single-family bungalow. Water charges for two hundred cubic meters annually, one thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars a year compared to the southwest Ontario average of one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars a year. So again, the water charges are higher than average. And the percentage of household income that is dedicated to property taxes, based on the average household income of seventy-one thousand, is approximately five percent. And once you add in the wastewater charges, essentially another form of taxation, it's up to six point seven percent of the average household income. The report then goes through to summarize some of our different cost centers and how they compare to average. In all but waste management, our total costs exceed average. However, I believe this reflects that we provide a higher level of service and very high-quality services compared to some of the comparators, rather than inefficient spending or something, lack of other revenues or along those lines. So really, that report was just to be received for information purposes, and rather than include the whole report as an attachment, I have included the URL, and this report is available on the city's website. The next report is the year-end report. Sorry, I have some notes here, too. Really, another context document, for the most part, the decision or direction from council at this point forward will not impact the outcome of 2018, as the year is over and closed. The surplus summary on the second page shows that overall, we had a total surplus of just over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is driven by a general operating surplus of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, the police services surplus of two hundred and forty-three thousand, and reduced by overall deficit in general revenues and tax-related adjustments of a hundred thousand. So our net operating surplus was just under three hundred thousand dollars. Offsetting that was slight overspending in capital of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, bringing our total surplus to the one twenty-two. I would point out that this represents less than a one percent variance from the total tax levy that we collected, which, in my personal opinion, is extremely reasonable to come within less than one percent of where you expect it to be at year-end. That being said, I'd also challenge the perception that a surplus is a good thing. We don't want to see deficits, because then we are left scrambling on how to fund them without impacting the next year. But where we have surpluses, we want to look at those as well. So why did we essentially collect more tax than we needed to provide that service? So there's pros and cons to both outcomes. I don't, there's summaries of each division, as well as tables that show how each capital project ended up. Really, the one appendix that we were looking for direction is for council to approve all of the reserve transfers that took place in the year, and I believe that's the first appendix in the report. Paying specific attention to the column titled unbudgeted. So these would have been reserve transfers that happened throughout the year that were not reflected in the budget at the beginning of the year. And then there's a description of why that reserve transfer is either recommended or why it's transpired. But that really is the only recommendation out of the report, and Corporate Services Committee did recommend that council make that recommendation, resolution, excuse me. The next report is our tax policy report. So I'd argue that after setting the budget, which is really where we look at service levels, where we consider service levels, and where we make capital investment decisions, tax policy is one of the most important decisions council can make that will impact the taxes that a taxpayer pays. A total tax bill is a dollar amount that's calculated based on two factors. One is the CVA, assessed value of your property, and the second item is the tax rate. So as council knows, each property is assessed a value by MPAC, and that is something that the city does not have any influence over. They are an independent organization. However, the tax rate is something that council calculates based on three factors. One, and the biggest one being the budget, so whatever our overall tax levy is, and in this case, our tax levy was just over thirty million dollars, and that represented a three point four seven increase over 2018. It was estimated at the time of budget that, once we factored in the county and school board levies, as well as growth, that our overall increase in the aggregate levy would be two point five one. The other factor is total CVA. So while each individual property is taxed at what their individual CVA is, when we set the tax rate, we look at the total CVA per tax class. And things that have an impact on that as to whether the rates go up and down are growth. And there are two types of growth. One is real growth, and that's where we add new assessment to the tax rule that was not there before. So the addition of a new property or a change in state of property. The other type of growth would be phased-in assessment growth, and that type of growth impacts tax shift, but it does not relieve existing taxpayers of the burden. So that real growth number is the number that comes into play. And in 2018, we had real growth of zero point four eight percent. So at a high level, that modest growth compared to the previous year does not allow us to make great strides in tax policy. However, we were able to limit tax increases on the commercial, industrial, and multi-residential tax classes, and keep the tax rate on residential below three percent. And then finally, the last item that council has an impact on is the ratios. And I don't know if you have this up there, but on page five, there's a little chart. Sorry, could have given you the actual page number. That one with the yellow. So this basically shows how ratios impact the taxes. So if MPAC came along and assigned a CVA to every property without ratios, we would just take that total CVA of six hundred thousand. We would divide our municipal levy over that total amount, and that would give us our tax rates. But what we have the authority to do is set tax ratios, and that changes the weight of CVA for each tax class. So in the example of multi-residential here, with a tax ratio of one point nine five, the total weighted CVA compared to residential is a hundred and ninety-five thousand versus a hundred thousand, even though MPAC gave them both the same value. And now, when you divide the full municipal levy over those weighted CVAs, you can see how the taxes differ, even though MPAC assigned them each the same assessed value. So that's where we have the ability to change the weight or the amount of value the MPAC assigns when we calculate what our rates are.
Just going to get you to clarify. CVA stands for?
Current value assessment.
So that's the current value assessment of homes?
That's right. That is the value, that is the basis or the valuation method that MPAC is using currently. So those are actually our previous year's ratios, just as an example. When we're looking at ratios, we had four goals that we were keeping in mind. One is to move towards the county ratios. We originally had the ability to use ratios in 1998 after the overhaul of the taxation system, and this was to allow for a gradual change to the new method of valuing properties and taxing especially business-related properties, so that there wouldn't be this immediate shift onto the residential taxpayer. So, and then we joined the county in 2001, so at that point, we made a commitment to slowly move towards the county's ratios. The second item that we look at as a goal is to reduce our exposure to risk and valuation changes. For example, when you have an industrial property that either becomes vacant or is removed from the tax rule, the higher your ratio is, the greater the impact of that downward valuation change. So when we see a property's assessment come down through ARB decision, when we have a lower ratio, the impact to the taxpayer is going to be lessened. The third item would be to encourage economic development, and I pointed out in my report that the consensus, there is no consensus that tax rates necessarily drive commercial and industrial growth. However, I'd be tough to argue that reducing those ratios and reducing those tax rates would have a negative impact on economic development. And then finally, to meet legislative requirements. A couple of years ago, there was a requirement to reduce the multi-residential ratio to two or below. We are meeting that requirement, but there may, in the future, be other legislative requirements that we're required to meet. And overall, we wanted to change our ratios, reduce our non-residential ratios, but still keep our total change in the residential rate of around two, under three percent. And I was sort of using the direction that council had given at budget meeting number two, where I think the number that we aimed at was two point nine three at that time. The ratios recommended result in an estimated tax increase on the residential, to the residential taxpayer of two point nine five percent. And at the same time, we are able to reduce the ratios, or reduce the tax rates assigned to multi-residential, commercial, and a negligible increase, or decrease, sorry, to industrial properties. I did want to sort of leave you with one disclaimer. At the time that this report was generated, education rates were assumed to be unchanged, and that's typically what we see year over year. We do have our education rates now, and they have not changed significantly. Also, the county levy has, will change slightly after the decision to reduce the farm ratio. Again, that will have a negligible impact on an individual taxpayer. However, it does still need to be reflected here. And I will note that we are not recommending a change in the farm tax ratio. So although the county has moved from point two five down to point two four, or at least made that motion, our ratio is remaining at point two five in this proposal. And that finally, the increase in the tax rate will only mirror the increase in the tax bill if a property is not moving through a four-year phased-in assessment growth. So if you had a change in your assessment through the last reassessment cycle, that would be phased in over four years, the increase. We're not taking that into account. So whatever your phased-in change would be over and above the change in the rate as far as how your tax bill is calculated. Other than that, I'm open to questions, but that's tax policy in a nutshell.
Questions from his own? Seeing none, back to Counselor Dodd. Thank you.
I told you she was smart. The next report that we looked at was actually a follow-up report, report from a presentation that we had received several months ago from Big Brothers Big Sisters of On Sound regarding an in-school mentor program. This had some back-and-forth discussions about the pros and the cons of the city becoming a partner with the Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Some of the concerns were both of lost productivity and efficiency with the removal of individuals from the corporation, one hour a week for the school period. At the end of the discussion, it was discussed thoroughly through the committee, and it was voted that committee would support allowing up to a maximum of four employees total, and that the program be reviewed after one year's time to see, did it have an impact on productivity? Did it have any sort of impacts on just the daily goings of the city working? Currently, right now, Gray County is a partner within this program. This isn't a one-hour-a-week program during the school hours, or school months between September and June. And what happened at the county, the county had a lunch and learn. Twenty-four staff members had looked at it, and two had signed up. Overall, there is Meridian Credit Union, Nickel Insurance, and Bruce Gray Child and Family Services that are associated with this. This is the first year that it had been, had been implemented, and there's about ten employees that are in this program. The next we received was the 2018 bylaw enforcement fourth quarter report. There was three hundred and sixty-two calls between the months of October and December. Two hundred and forty-six of those investigations were on waste management, and seventy-five were on general inquiries. Year-to-date of the 2018 year, there was eighteen hundred and eleven total calls. The majority of these calls revolved around waste management, property standards, and yard maintenance. During that meeting as well, Counselor Gregg had produced a photo of some garbage that was being left outside of Multi-Res in the downtown core. And so, once again, we kind of had the discussion of how do we handle that garbage that's being left out there with in-between pickup dates? So I'm sure that's something that's going to come back to committee for further discussion. We received the 2019 regulatory bylaw action plan, kind of outlines what the bylaw department will be working on throughout the year, and some of the big regulatory bylaws that'll be reviewed this year, fees and charges bylaw, traffic bylaw, and the extended parking bylaw. And with that, your worship, I would move approval of the minutes.
Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Merton.
Through your worship, about the Big Brothers adventure. I'm wondering, as we move forward, if it's possible, this would be the first time, I believe, that the city has engaged in this kind of endeavor. I would find it very helpful to put some numbers around this commitment. I know we've talked about the one hour times four, but there is an indirect time of the travel time back and forth. It would be helpful to know for It would be helpful to know for this particular program, since it's a pilot, how much direct and indirect cost is it going to be? How are we actually going to measure, what were the goals? How did it meet those goals? And to help us decide in a year whether we wish to go forward. I'm not saying I'm not against the concept, I need a little bit more meat to the evaluation.
Through your worship, we can certainly track that time through our work order system and report back fully to council on the time spent, the results. I guess we'll have to find a way to also report back to you on that, but we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so call for question, all in favor? That is carried. Next, we have a report from the Tom Thompson Art Gallery, which I understand Councillor Tamming is looking after, from April 8, 2019.
Thank you, your worship. We had a great meeting. We've got a very, sorry. Thank you, your worship. I'll keep it brief. We had a terrific meeting. We have a lively, capable, opinionated bunch of people serving on the committee, and it's good to see. Of note, our group approved two new volunteers, and I just want to shout out for Rian Mohammed. Our church sponsored his family two years ago, and he loves the gallery, and he's offered to help volunteer, a grade 12 student at one of the high schools. And it's just terrific to see somebody from that background embracing Canada and its culture. So Rian Mohammed, welcome to the gallery. Gil Lord is coming to town. She runs Lord Cultural Services, which is literally a global museum consultancy, and she's going to come back in June. She's already seen the gallery a few times, and she's going to help us develop a strategic plan. We all know that the gallery suffered some setbacks over the last few years. We really feel we're gathering our feet under us. She knows our gallery, and she's quite committed and has a lot of fondness for it. She's doing this for a relative pittance, for which we are grateful, and she's just excited to help the Tom out, so stay tuned. We also, of note, met with some representatives from the Tom Thompson Art Foundation, and I just want to, by way of background, just remind the ratepayers and the councillors that the foundation was created several years ago when it looked like there was a possibility that the gallery might be spun off into an independently-owned entity, perhaps in a new build. We don't need to revisit what happened there, but the foundation is still technically here. It has some funds, approximately $100,000 still, that it gathered, or rather obtained, and they basically would like to expend that money with an eye towards improving the gallery in some way. And they came to us, and they had a suggestion. They said, wouldn't it be good if the city knew the value of its assets, the value of the collection? And so we considered that. We're still going to talk to them about that. There were other suggestions, that perhaps not a monetary appraisal, but perhaps the funds could go towards cataloging the collection in a more formal catalog for sale and so forth, but we're looking at that. We're quite excited about working with them, and again, stay tuned. Finally, I just want to, in the tradition of Mr. Thomas, who normally delivers these presentations, I want to offer a plug for two brand-new exhibits. Lisa Burke is putting on Volte Face, and Barbara Sprague features The Dress. And they are phenomenal productions, and our Tom continues to punch above its weight. I urge you to run, don't walk. See you at the top.
And with that, you are recommending approval of the minutes.
I am.
Any questions? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Down to number 15. We have no postponed matters. Number 16, we have no previous notices of motion. Number 17, discussion of additional business. Councillor Dodd.
Thank you, your worship. I'm almost kind of stealing the thunder of Councillor Thomas here as the Festival of Northern Lights representative, but this is just a setup that there is going to be the trivia night for the Festival of Northern Lights on Saturday, May 11, at the Bay Shore Community Center. Registration is $100 for a table and the teams of 10, and that is, you can register on info@fonl.ca. It's trivia night for the Festival of Northern Lights on Saturday, May 11, at the Bay Shore Community Center.
Done?
Done. I've got three matters. I attended Billy Bishop House Museum a week or so ago. There have been three new paintings commissioned and donated by Ted Horton and his daughter. They're painted by Sherry Pringle, but not local Sherry Pringle. This one's from Napanee. They're really nice. Each one is about our Victoria Cross recipients, so one for Bishop, one for Holmes, one for Curry. They're sort of a cloggers that tell the story, and they're pretty neat, so big thank you to Ted and Joanne Horton for that. Saturday night, the Legion District C Convention was here, so we had, boy, I don't know how many, I didn't count, hundreds of legionnaires that were here from Graybridge, Huron, and Perth, as well as as far away as Niagara Falls, Ottawa, and elsewhere here for their convention. Good event for our city for the weekend. Coming up this Wednesday, up at the High School ODSS, there is the Eighth Annual Ride for Cancer, so that's supporting that. Our friend Jonathan Wardrobe is going to be riding probably for the eighth time, I'm not sure. So it's stationary bike riding. As a fundraiser, all the students are involved, or not all the students, but as many as they want to be involved to raise funds for support of families that are going through the cancer process. And other than that, happy Easter to everybody coming up this weekend, and maybe we'll see evidence of spring sometime between now and our next council meeting, if at all possible.
Through your worship, if you'll indulge me?
Yep.
Thank you. Through your worship, very exciting news. We're going to start work on the downtown root precinct, phase one, commencing April 29. So the substantial completion will be August 30. The contractor is EC King. We're expecting a lot of, well, a very exciting project in terms of the outcome and the product that'll be produced. Looks like we'll be reducing the effect on 8th, A Street itself by having two separate closures, but probably not exceeding a week on each one of them. We've also, we're working with the farmer's market to help relocate the outdoor vendors. So what we're planning on doing is barricading First Avenue East off at 8th Street and setting up the outdoor vendors along the street towards the municipal Lot 8. We're working closely with the farmer's market. We've ensured that there's enough stalls there to accommodate their outdoor vendors, and we should have a successful market during the summertime. And again, we're open for business. All businesses are open for business during the downtown root precinct, including the farmer's market.
Good, thank you. Councilor Merton, we're back to you. At number 18, the motion?
Moved by myself, that the committee of the whole rise and report?
All in favor? That is carried. Motion to adopt?
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Kapke, that the action taken in the committee of the whole in considering public meetings, deputations and presentations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports of city staff, consent agenda, committee minutes, matters postponed, motions for which notice was previously given, and additional business be confirmed by this council.
Good, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Notices of motion? Seeing none, coming. It's Bloomfield bylaws.
Through your worship, the bylaws listed for approval on tonight's agenda include the confirmatory bylaw, a bylaw to amend the traffic bylaw to allow for free parking in the downtown core, a bylaw to amend the fees and charges bylaw respecting downtown parking fees, a bylaw to execute an agreement with EC King Construction respecting First Avenue East, bylaw to execute an agreement with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities respecting a grant from the municipalities for climate innovation program, and two bylaws to execute facility use agreements with the junior and senior lacrosse clubs for use of the JD MacArthur Arena and the Harry Lumley Bay Shore Community Center.
And thank you. Councilor Merton?
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Kapke, that bylaw numbers 2019-059, 2019-05060, 2019-061, 2019-062, 2019-063, 2019-064, and 2019-065 be passed and enacted.
And all in favor? And that passes, is approved. We are now at 9:21. We've completed all the business of the night, so we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.